Hello and welcome to the selectmen's meeting for February 25th, 2014. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Roll call please.
Colin McNamara present.
And Sulecio present. I'd also like to announce to the public that the meeting is being tape-recorded. Chairman's additions or deletions. We are adding 3.8, vote to authorize an additional $50,000 in deficit spending for winter operations. And we are deleting 3.5, which was to be the review and approval of the curbside solid waste contract extension. Not ready for that yet?
Still waiting for the contractor to sign, so we typically have the board sign last.
Okay. We don't, we can just start with the, okay, review and approve meeting minutes from February 11th, 2014. Looking okay, Colin?
I already looked them over. I didn't see any, any issues. I make a motion to approve the meeting minutes for February 11th, 2014.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. 2.1, Sufanioli Town Clerk to announce the winner of the number one dog tag. No puppy today.
Unfortunately, we haven't been able to get ahold of the winner. So I'm gonna give her some more time to get back to us before we present her with the blanket. But I would like to remind people that this is the last week before the $10 late fee goes into effect. So if you haven't registered your dog now, when you come in next week, there'll be an additional $10 besides the price of the tag. So get in in the next few days if you can, avoid that additional cost.
Or don't and we'll put it in the coffers.
Absolutely. And that's all I have.
Okay. So you'll get back to us when you get in touch with them?
Yes, I will.
Okay. So it's still a mystery.
Well, I know who it is. We just haven't gotten ahold of her.
Okay. I'm gonna give you a chance to sit down and get your breath, okay?
Do you want to do some of these other things?
I'm gonna skip ahead to some of the other stuff. 3.1, review and approve request of Unitil to cross, alter, or construct within a public way for installation of a gas service at 110 Warren Road.
I move that we approve the request of Unitil to cross, alter, or construct within a public way for the installation of a gas service at 110 Warren Road.
I'll second that. Andy, that's just a standard.
It is.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Do one more. 3.2, review and approve Chapter 90 reimbursement request in the amount of $280,563.30.
This is work that's already been done, so this is just getting our, getting our reimbursement now that everything is taken care of. The board had approved the request several months ago.
Okay.
I move to approve Chapter 90 reimbursement request in the amount of $280,563.30 for drainage improvements, reclamation, and paving.
I'll second that. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It's gonna take us a second.
Do that one before we do Joan.
Sure. I'm gonna do 3.3, review recommendation of Fire EMS Chief Don Klein to award a public emergency fire alarm reporting system contract.
So we went out to bid, request for proposals actually about a month ago, for fire alarm system. Advertised for a month. We received one proposal from Mammoth Fire Alarm. The chief has reviewed it with his staff and recommends that we issue a, execute a contract with Mammoth Fire Alarm out of Lowell, Mass. And the contract price is $53,509.60, which is substantially less than the chief had expected that prices would come in at. So happy, happy to see that, that it was a nice aggressive proposal. We actually were a little surprised that we didn't receive more bids. We were expecting one or two more, but Chief is here. If there are any questions for him.
Chief, is that for the, the radio fire boxes?
Correct. That's for the radio control. That will be the console that we'll be putting in. And because the bids came in lower than anticipated, we believe that there's enough money left in the allocation to complete the additional work that we were gonna go for next year, which is to upgrade all of the current fire alarm systems within the town buildings to access radio control. So I'm, we're gonna start that project right away, going on and having our vendors look at their system, because now we know who our vendor is for the console. And we will start that and get that one rolling. So we'll have numbers hopefully by late spring.
All set up?
All set. I move to approve the request of Chief Don Klein to award the public emergency fire alarm reporting system contract to Mammoth Fire Alarm for the new municipal public emergency alarm reporting system.
I wanted to put the amount.
In the amount of $53,509.60.
Thank you. Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Do you have something we need to sign for that?
No, we'll put the, we'll put the contract together and execute that.
Now, we'll go back up to 2.2. Joan Lander Superintendent, North Middlesex Regional School District, is here to discuss the FY '15 operating budget and also the high school building project. Welcome.
Thank you very much for having us. I'm Rob Templeton.
Hey, Rob.
Building committee.
Yeah, I've seen him a few times.
He should recognize him.
I miss you.
I'm glad you could come.
Yes.
Thank you.
What would you like to talk about first?
Sure.
We just wanted to give an opportunity for the board to ask any questions about the project. We have two weeks, as you know, until town meeting, actually, two weeks tonight. And any, any questions, we'd be happy to ask. And, you know, if, once those questions are answered, your TV feed is live. I'd love to be able to give an opportunity to announce our upcoming community forums, so that...
Oh, I'd love, I'd love for you to do that. That'd be great. Any questions that you have? I know you said you were looking at the pictures.
Yeah, I looked at the pictures, the drawings. It's a, it's an attractive building. The, I did have one question. It's kind of silly question, but are you gonna have to take down a lot of trees where you're placing it to build the building?
There, I mean, there are some of those larger trees in the back that are gonna come down. Part of the, you know, part of the plan from a landscaping standpoint is, is to replace a number of trees. So, you know, part of that, that lead certification that we had took in, took into account, some of that, that tree, you know, removal, you know, kind of a plus minus. I don't, I don't, I don't know if it's a net zero from a tree standpoint, but there were quite a few trees going in to, to the project from a landscaping standpoint.
And then where, do you have a map with you of where on the property it's gonna be built? Because I saw, what I was looking at today was just the building itself and then the, the interior. I didn't find the...
It's too bad, because our boards are downstairs.
The superintendent's answer a question, I'll run and grab the picture.
Okay, great. Thank you.
He just happens to carry around poster boards.
No, he doesn't. They're downstairs.
No, I delivered them yesterday.
Yeah.
So do you have any other questions? I guess I'd like to just make a general statement as the superintendent. Looking at our present building in general, it does not meet the educational needs of our students for the 21st century education.
Sorry.
I'm just getting my speech.
Sorry for what?
Probably not. We see each other after April 28th for about five years. We see each other every day.
I understand that.
So, and unfortunately, so here's, here's the layout. This is Route 119.
Yep.
Right here. So the existing building is right here. The new building's gonna go inside.
Where's the, the old superintendent's office? Is it like right here?
Right here.
Oh, okay.
Right, right in the middle of it.
It's nice that it's kind of in the middle of the property.
So it kind of goes into that hill in a way.
Yeah, so it digs into this hill. So there's some savings there. So some of that material that we're pulling out of there gets moved to the back to flatten out some of these athletic field areas. What was key about this location here? There was a location that we had envisioned right here. It was a little more fronted on 119, so, you know, folks kind of liked that. But what that would require us to do was encroach on this two-story piece of the existing building. That would have added about $2 million in modular space that we would have to have invested in for demolishing that while construction was going on to replace, to move students in and out. And so that, that was one of the main reasons we didn't go with that placement there.
There was a delay with that one as well, right?
Yeah, it was because of...
Because of the modulars, too?
Because of the modular space and how we had to, you know, do some demolition on the existing building while kids were in school. It was another, I wanna say six to eight months of construction time before, or six to eight months until the kids actually got into the, to the building. There was a version where the building was over here as well, but nobody liked that because it really impacted the athletic fields. And, you know, big piece of what we were trying to avoid is, you know, all the kids that are in the school now and for the next four years, you know, are not gonna benefit from the school, from the new school. So we really wanted to minimize the impact to those students during that timeframe. You know, and to, to put the, put the building right on top of the existing field, you know, kind of did away with home football camps and home track or anything like that for the next four years, so.
Is it gonna, do you think it's gonna really cause havoc for the existing students with parking and that sort of thing while the building's being built?
Yeah, I mean, parking is gonna be a challenge during, during that timeframe. But we'll, we'll make do as best, as best we can. Parking's, parking's kind of a challenge now. But I think from a, from a space standpoint, there's, there is space available, so we'll just have to work through it. And it might be, I don't tell my daughter, but maybe it'll be a little bit harder to get a student parking spot.
Well, it's better than, it's better than when I went there. When I went there, it was, they didn't assign spots. And it was kind of like a Hunger Games in the morning to try and get, to try and get all the, get your parks.
They always parked the road, too, before they put the, put the no parking signs up there.
No, we weren't, we couldn't park then, no.
But yeah, parking, parking will be a, a challenge over the next, next, probably two, three years. But every, every school that we visited that had new construction.
That always, yeah.
Will, will do some things back here and make it...
In the end, is there gonna be more parking?
Some of the parking spaces, we have a bus area, a designated drop-off and pickup area. There are some spots there. But as the, when the buses go in, people won't be able to park there. But during the day and at events.
Ends up being about net zero for parking.
Okay.
There was a bunch of discussion about extra spots and, and putting, putting more spots in there. And what we, as the superintendent said, we, we kind of settled with this situation here that gave us some flexibility.
And we also did an analysis of what the stand parking, student parking, whether the lots are at full capacity. And they're not right now, so we felt comfortable with, with the decision.
Anybody in the audience have questions? I have a question for those of you that are here. Have you seen any of the presentations? You have? Good.
And we even took a tour.
You did the tour? Nice.
Yeah.
This does my heart good.
Rob is very excited for that. So just going back to a general stage, and obviously the outside of the building and the design of the building, there was a lot of thought and a lot of meetings, continuous meetings.
How many did we have?
I think, I think it's up to about 135, 136 meetings now. We've also consulted with all the staff at the high school and administration, the community members, to really look at the design of the building so that we were fiscally responsible in our decisions, but also built a building that could take us 50 years and beyond. So the spaces are very flexible. There's a lot of dead space in the present building, hall, long hallways, cut down on that. It is a two-story building, which is definitely, from a cost perspective, much more efficient building to heat. And also for the teachers right now, you can go weeks without one teacher at one end of the building. Speaking to a colleague, there'll be more collaboration. There's teacher planning rooms in different, this pod setup, there's a Matthews pod, science, engineering, math pods. And we were very careful to build, we needed eight labs, science labs. And there was discussion about putting them next door to each other, but we looked at that. It was much more efficient in both, from an educational and from a fiscal standpoint, to put them on top of each other, because you'd be laying plumbing. So a lot of thought. And we kept going back to the designer and pushing back. The building, the square footage is less than we currently have. Right now, it's about 197 square feet. It's about 180 by...
180,500.
Yes. And so in that, so we, because we were able to be more flexible in the spacing and multi-use areas, we were able to minimize the square footage. The MSBA was very happy with the design from an educational standpoint. There is a common area when you walk into the building, which is for a cafeteria that can be opened up into community space. It could be used as classroom space. So a lot of the different sections of the building are, are built with a lot of, taking into consideration a lot of our programs. Including after, after hours are, there'll be storage in the classroom, so all our after-school activities will have storage space. And we're hoping that the, our students benefit from the space if, if all goes well, but also the community. As a regional school district, there's not space in, in any of our communities that we can bring everyone together. We don't even have space right now to bring all our teachers K-12 together. So it's very exciting, and we were thrilled with the, the design. And that the MSBA thought that there was a lot of thought and really felt positive about it.
And you're excited, I can tell.
I'm very excited. I really, you know, as we go through the process, and since I met with the department chairs at the high school today, we were talking about the project. And one of the department chairs said, if we build it, they will come. And I never thought of it in that way. Really hoping this would revitalize our, our school department and the communities. So I really see this positive thing for our students and the communities.
I agree, I agree. Mr. Templeton, the money. How much did the MSBA give us?
We got a grant from the MSBA for $40, $40,200,000.
Can you say that slower?
$40,200,000.
Wow.
You never ask me that question. You always get...
Because he loves to say it. He just loves to say it.
But yeah, it is. I mean, we joke about it, but I mean, we won't, we won't see that again.
It's, it's, it's amazing to me. You know, every time I think about it, they're giving us $40 million as a grant. That's, that's phenomenal.
Well, for those at the, at the school meeting last night, we were arguing about whether we were gonna get a, a grant for, for over summer education for our stu, for our teachers. And whether that was gonna be $50,000, and I hear we're talking about $40,000. So it's, that's a beautiful thing.
And just because this is live, I'd just like to thank all the members that served on the building committee. So you've been at every meeting and every meeting at the school building authority. We kind of go with an entourage. So there's people from every community. So it was pretty impressive the day of the vote, and pretty emotional, because it's a very special time for the public schools and Rob. I don't know how Rob does it, working full-time, and he emails me, and I'm not getting 24 hours a day. It's kind of scary, Rob. So I, I, there's a lot of hours that went in from community members, and we really, I really appreciate them on behalf of the students.
Rob, you wanted to talk about dates, too?
Yeah, I think my schedules. All right. So, so we have a number of community forums set up over the next two weeks. So two weeks from tonight, March 11th, at 7 o'clock, is a special town meeting. So ahead of that, you know, our goal is really to get as much information out to the public as possible on the project. So tomorrow night, the 26th of February, at 6:00 PM at the high school, we have a tour of the high school, right at the meet, right at the front entrance. Take about an hour to walk through all the different areas of the current high school. And then we will have a community forum that's gonna look at the general education aspects of the proposed building. So we'll look at, basically, all of our community forums are divided into three sections. There's the how we got here section, so why we chose the project that we did. Then there's a section on the building, the education, the educational aspects of those different aspects. And then you gotta end with, with the dollars and what it's gonna cost. So we go through the impact to the towns through that process. So it's, takes about an hour, hour-plus to go through, and then we have plenty of time for question and answers. On February 27th, on Thursday, we have same, same schedule, tour of the high school. And then we're gonna, through the community forum, we're gonna talk about the science, technology, engineering, and math section of the building. So the STEM, the STEM cluster that we talked about. And what's gonna be nice about that building is we're gonna actually do the presentation on the STEM cluster in our existing science labs. So you'll kind of get a sense of what, what the, what the students have today and what the potential is for tomorrow. On March 1st, which is this upcoming Saturday, and then March 8th, which is the Saturday following, both at 10:00 AM, we have a tour of the high school. For those who aren't able to make it at night, stop by at the, at the front of the, the school, and we'll spend about an hour or so going through all the different aspects of the building. For those in Townsend, on March 4th, on Tuesday at 10:00 AM at the Townsend Senior Center, we'll be giving our, our present, our community forum presentation to the members there and anybody else who would like to attend. Again, that's March 4th, Tuesday at 10:00 AM. And then finally, our, our main community forum, which is gonna cover all aspects of the building, is March 5th, Wednesday night at 7:00 PM in the auditorium of the high school. So hopefully, over the course of the next two weeks, one of those dates works for you, and you can come and visit. And you're really asking, that's the most important thing. People have questions. You know, you can watch on TV every, every one of these community forums that we've gone to. Somebody asks a question that makes me think of, you know, something different about, about the project and how to out, get our message out there. So the more people that come, the better. Our web, our webpage is www.nh, or sorry, nmhsproject.com. So please check that out. Our schedule is along there.
I think you can actually link to that from the school website as well.
The school website has, has all that as well. And actually, our, all our town websites have it.
I'd also want to thank the chair, Mr. McNamara, and members of Pankown that have attended the joint meetings. Really appreciate it. From, from Townsend and Ashby, Pepperel. It's been great.
Lot of participation.
Yeah, we appreciate it.
Yeah. Would you, I was thinking, and I know we had talked about it before, would you like us to have a formal vote on, from a selectman perspective, our support of the project?
I would love it.
Would you like to make a mention?
Let me have read this.
Just bring it.
Okay. I move that we give our support to the new high school project.
I will second that. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous.
Thank you.
So, we got our fingers crossed. I think it's, I think it's a great project, and it was. It's a lot of work, but a lot of things to learn. Learned a lot with it, too. I learned that it's a lot harder than changing my kitchen. I thought that was bad. That was just before I got on the building committee, was doing the kitchen, so it's, it's been great. I did want to mention that meeting at the senior center, we all felt that it was really important that we come to the seniors during the day to make it convenient on them, okay? So this is not meant to be a sales job, okay? Although, of course, we are biased for the project. I'll admit that. But we felt as a sign of respect for the elders in the community that we really wanted to do that. So we are doing that in all three towns, okay? And of course, anybody else that wants to go during the day instead of going to one of the night meetings is certainly welcome as well. Hope to see you there.
Thank you.
Thanks. Now, second thing. Yeah.
Now that we got the percentages up.
Oh, absolutely.
So you had your public hearing last night.
We did.
I was able to attend. Andy was there. But for those of the public who have not seen that yet.
Just wanted to do a very brief overview of the budget. We do have the governance numbers right now, the assessments for the towns, and also our transportation assessment. Just in general, we've seen an increase in both specialized and regularized transportation this year. Our contract was off with our best transportation vendors, so we had to rebid. And we were working off of prices we received five years ago. So we saw an increase in transportation. Our health insurance came in lower, so we saw a savings there, which was excellent. Last year, when I came to the Board of Selectmen's meeting, I had some good news because of the way they were doing target share. So Ashby and Townsend, the assessment actually went down, and it went up in Pepperel. The budget did change, but the, but we, we went forward with the budget that was voted, and we didn't go back and reduce Pepperel's on target share and increase the other town. So there's a difference this year of the total increase to Townsend is 406,236. That being said, I wanted to talk about some things we've done. We were originally looking at a 4% increase to the budget. We did an assessment in the district. We've seen a decrease in enrollment. So since I arrived, I'll be completing my second year, we've seen a decrease in enrollment of approximately 286 students. So since I arrived, I'll be completing my second year, we've seen a decrease in enrollment of approximately two hundred and eighty-six students. So we really wanted to adjust our staffing trend to also, as we wrote up the student population trend in the district. We were able to reduce elementary school teachers, one in Swalden and two in Gordon Brook, and still maintain pretty small class sizes. One of the things that came up last night was kindergarten. Our kindergartens tend to run between twenty and twenty-five students, but it's a one to thirteen ratio because there's two adults in the classroom, a full-time teacher and a paraprofessional. Some of the other highlights we talked about, it was, so it was, we're reducing our staffing by eight point four. Teaching staff. And because of the enrollment going down, we're able to adequately meet the needs of our students and we were able to provide the services that we have been providing. In central office, there was a decrease of one point five this year. We did not fill the human resource director position. We are not filling that for next year. We've had absorbed that into the business office and I also have assumed some of those responsibilities. Because of the timing of the year, we did not go forward and hire an assistant superintendent this year. So we've absorbed those responsibilities this year. But last night, the school committee, upon my, uh, recommendation, did appoint a new assistant superintendent. Very excited for the district because her skills match the needs of, of the district. As far as we're going K twelve, she comes with a lot of experience. So that was very exciting news. Otherwise, special education, our outside, out of district tuitions remain pretty stable. What we talked about last night is circuit breaker reimbursement. We receive reimbursement from the state for some of our special costs. We are creating, it's kind of, as you create more in district programs, your circuit breaker reimbursement goes down. And as students, students age out of programs, you know, our, our, we're not receiving as high of reimbursement because we're serving students in district or they have graduated.
So basically, things change line items.
Yes.
Basically, you know, you don't have as much income there, but hopefully you've saved some money as well. So it's hard to, to chase those things.
Right, and one of the things that we're aggressively pursuing is we have leased the Peter Fitzpatrick School for another year and a half. And we want to open our own public day school, so we are exploring that. Our students now who have to go to outside placements, go to our collaborative. They're moving to locations further away from our three districts, three, three member towns. So students will be riding on buses, long distances. Sometimes some of these collaborative and private schools, especially private school places, students can be on buses for an hour, hour and a half, and then they don't get acclimated to the community that they live. So that is something we're definitely pursuing. Just wanna look at my notes quickly. Some of our potential cost savings that we're looking at is we are gonna talk to our new vendor, which is D Transportation. I'd like to publicly thank them. They found our bus company in Pepper went out of, went bankrupt this year. Just to add a little bit more drama to, to what's happening. And we, in a very short amount of time, we had to find a new vendor. And D Transportation stepped up as well as North Reading Transportation. Instead, they would help us out and they did not increase the cost. So that was remarkable and we really appreciate that. D is our vendor for all three communities. We're gonna meet with them and look if we can consolidate routes. We don't know if that is a possibility. We're looking at how to reduce energy costs. We have been pursuing solar energy. We're still in the process of working through that big process. We have identified someone. And our major, the major thing we're focusing on is creating our own programs. We need to create programs in this area. If you look in this area, we don't, we're not, we don't have programs accessible to us. And if you go up in New Hampshire, they don't either. So we definitely, we're looking maybe at an opportunity to tuition students into our district. We've already started doing that. And it's, uh, we have a new program that we started this year at Peter Fitz. And for students eighteen to twenty-two with severe special needs. And we, we have a student that attends from our neighboring district and it's been very successful. And I invite anyone to stop by. The students on Wednesdays have a cafe and they love customers. So if anyone from the community would like to stop by. We're looking at using, in the F Y fourteen budget, we allocated two hundred thousand dollars in E and D. We're looking to allocate four hundred and eighty thousand in the F Y fifteen budget. Two hundred from, two hundred thousand from E and D. And I also wanted the community to know that we did receive two hundred and eighty thousand in settlement from M Sec. That was given back to the, the towns. So we, we bought, we, we put that in E and D this year and we can access it next year.
I will say those, the new, those new programs really are, are the way to, to try and fix some of the recurring issues that, you know, that we have. There's only so much you can do. You raise the budget, you know, us raising a budget by two percent causing, you know, causing significant issues to our communities. It's, it's not, you know, it's not sustainable when you look at, you know, the, the needs of, of the district. And if we build new, you're, you're smiling like you, like you're agreeing with me, so I'm happy with that. As you look at building new buildings and kind of really drawing people to, to the community, it's, it's a blessing and curse with, with population decreases and being able to make adjustments based, based on that. So, you know, the things that the superintendent's doing to, you know, to kind of take things to the next level in terms of special education is, is really the only way that, you know, that we can solve some of these issues long-term and be able to interact with, with the communities and.
And, and you look at the fiscal part of this, but, but as a superintendent, and I was a former special ed director, so I have definitely feel that students should be able to access education in, in the communities and close to their families and the community that will support them. So bringing new programs is, is very important. And it gives parents options. It's very difficult to put your five and six-year-old on a bus, you know, for long distances. Just an overall for the budget, instructional support, it takes up close to fifty percent of the budget. Administration, about two percent. Out of district placements, right now, three percent. And the insurance and retirement cost for the district, sixteen percent. The operations and the maintenance, about seven to eight percent. And pupil services, our health, our, our psychologist guidance, about eight percent. Last night at the budget hearing, I was asked by the school committee to continue in the next four days. They really like to. Absolutely. They don't give me a long amount of time to think things through. I want to save the public one. Pressure's on.
It's pretty brave when there's only one here, Joan.
Absolutely. Go watch it at home. So I was asked from last night until Monday, March third, to look at the budget and see if there's other areas that we can cut. I will say it's a very tight budget. We, we, we had with the transportation and other increases contractual obligations. We already originally had a four percent budget and we were able to cut it back to two percent. So this has been something we have been working on since the governor's numbers came out. But I wanted to publicly say, because this will probably air before last night's school committee, that, that I was asked to go back and to meet with my administrative staff to see what we could do. I know that all our towns, you know, have fiscal challenges that they're dealing, as, as a lot of cities and towns have come along.
It makes it difficult because, you know, we're limited by the two and a half statute. And I, I don't know about anybody else, but just going to the grocery store, there are things that go up a lot more than two and a half percent. So trying to stretch that and, and live within your means, if, if that's the case, is really difficult. So, you know, you're facing it, we're facing it, everybody at home is facing it too, so. We'll get through somehow.
I had a question. The, the, the amount of, what's the delta between the amount of new money from, that the town can get through two and a half percent versus?
About three hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
So three hundred and fifty versus our, and our assessment increases?
Two, let me bring my notes. Two sixty, Joan? Or was it more than that?
The total changed from fourteen, fifteen is four.
Four hundred.
So the, nothing changed. We would, we would take all plus of your money. Takes the wrong word, man.
Use?
Yeah.
So the school committee will, we have a meeting on Monday and a finance committee meeting this Thursday. I also want to offer anyone from the board of selectmen or finance committees that would like to meet with me. I'd be more than happy to meet with anyone and certainly, if anything, anyone has anything they would like to explore, please feel free to bring it to my attention.
Any questions?
No, I, I looked at the information. Andy forwarded me the presentation. So I had, it answered, it was thorough, so it answered most of my questions.
So when you were referencing the old superintendent's office, did you mean I was looking old or the building? Cause I'm feeling in the last twenty-five, four hours, a lot older than I started.
I was referencing the, the old building.
I knew you were.
The White House is what we used to call it.
The White House.
The White House.
Again, I appreciate, and Andy's been working with me since the numbers came out.
Yeah, I'd just like to. Just give you a chance to.
Yeah, I'd just like to thank Joan and Nancy Haynes especially for all the work that they've done, keeping me in the loop of what's been going on with the budget as the budget's been developing. And, and also the school committee for the, the direction that they gave last night to the administration to, to see if there are additional cost savings that can be, can be found in this, in the budget. I don't, I don't make that request lightly because, you know, on the one hand, we're advocating for a school, for a new school, and I've been a strong proponent of that and will continue to be. Because I think it really is the, you know, the thing that is going to keep people here is, is that school and the investment in education. And it can't be just on the physical plant side. It has to be in, in the operating side as well. So I appreciate the fact that the, the school committee and the administration recognizes the challenges that, that we're facing. And hopefully we can, you know, we can work through it all and, and I'll be happy at the end of the day with a new school in the construction.
And just for our audience, in case they weren't there last night, I just want folks to know that, that Mr. Shan did speak up for Townsend and, and to the school committee. And, and that's kind of what they've been referring to, that, that he spoke up and said, can you go look at your numbers and can you help us out? Because this is the situation for Townsend this year. Which is why they're not certifying their budget Monday. Instead, they're going back and relooking at it. So we appreciate that.
I think they actually decided to certify on Monday that.
Oh, they're gonna certify at that amount?
No, no, they've asked me to come back on Monday, March third with some recommendations.
Okay. Okay.
And then the other, the other, you know, there's still a number of unknowns out there. Final chapter seventy numbers. Final chapter seventy-one transportation numbers, our local aid. So as, as things go forward, the school committee, you know, they could, they could certify a budget on Monday. Things could change between now and May sixth, when we have town meeting. So the, the picture, although it, it's becoming, it's becoming clearer now with the, with the school budget, there's still a lot of, a lot of room for, for change to take place. So we're, we're gonna continue to lobby. There was a strong outcry today from public officials at a meeting in, in Amherst, clamoring for more local aid, both on the municipal side. It was a, I think it was a, it was a joint House and Senate Budget Committee meeting that they held out in Amherst. But there were, there were school reps there, there were town reps there, begging for, for the legislature to, to restore some of the funding that's been cut over the years. Our local aid, I believe we're down about three hundred thousand from where we were in fiscal two thousand and eight. And that's, you know, that's, that's a lot when you, when you look at our local aid, which is about one point three million or so.
And I know that, you know, the governor's budget is just the first pass and I never get worried too much about the governor's part of it. But, but I'm wondering if it wouldn't, not that they don't know the situations that their towns are in, but if, if, Colin, if you're okay with this, I don't, I'd like to direct Andy to, to send a letter to our state rep and our senator, just to put it in writing, that this is the situation and these are the things that we're being faced with. And we realize that, that they're aware that there are fiscal restraints. But to be specific about, about some of the challenges that are in front of us right now and, and to ask them to remember to fight for us in Boston.
Sure. No problem here.
Please?
Absolutely.
Sometimes a letter speaks loudly.
I did contact the school finance, finance office today about the circuit breaker reimbursement and they did advise me to use the sixty percent as the number to, because it's very hard to tell right now if it will go up because it's certainly something they look to reduce spending when they have to allocate money to other areas in the, in the budget. Also, the grants are not gonna be known until later June, so I did follow up after last week's meeting.
We spent a lot of time talking about grants last night.
I did, so I figured I'd follow up.
Yeah, I know circuit breaker usually doesn't come out until late. But isn't that federal? Circuit breakers, state. That's right, too. Okay. Okay, well.
Some of the grants are federal, right?
Yeah, yeah, that's. The sped stuff.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Really appreciate it.
We'll keep in close contact.
Yeah, I'll see you a couple times. You'll see us soon.
I'll see you a couple times in the next couple of weeks, yes.
Next couple of days. Good night, everyone.
Night, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Bye.
I'll put my sign back.
Thank you for getting it. Very much.
Okay. Next one on the agenda is three point four. Announced two thousand fourteen opening of the Devon's Household Hazardous Productions Collection Center.
Oh, that should be products.
I thought they were doing something different.
Mass film studio. Just a, just a reminder for, for residents that Townsend is part of the Devon's Household Hazardous Waste Products Collection Center down at the former Fort Devens. It's open twenty days a year, ten months, two days per month. And opening next week, March fifth, followed by the eighth, Wednesday and Saturday. So it's the first Wednesday and the following Saturday. So it'll be open March through December, weather permitting. It is, it is uncovered, so rainy or snowy days, they, depending on how heavy the precipitation. It is, it is uncovered, so rainy or snowy days, they, depending on how heavy the precipitation is, they sometimes have to close. But they've been, they've been very lucky in terms of, of weather that they haven't really had to curtail their activities very much. And in the information that I gave the board in the, in the packet on the, the second page, this, this graph shows that Townsend's numbers are really jumped, have really jumped up since the first year. First year, we had only about 14 carloads from Townsend. 46 in 2012, 41 last year. So people are, are making good use of it. We're seeing, we're seeing very good use among all of the communities. We've, we started with, I think we started with seven communities plus mass development. The town of Devens, if you want to call it that. We've added Shirley and Ashby. And we're in negotiations now with, with Pepperell. And Westford has expressed some interest as well. So we're confident that we can accommodate them. It brings in additional revenues for us and, and additional capital, too. So financially, the center is, is doing extremely well. They've been able to level fund assessments for the last couple of years. And, and so hopefully, people will continue to take advantage of it.
I mean, it's, it's great. And even if you just go twice a year, I went, I packed up the car. I, I'm like a pack rat with the batteries and the, the light bulbs, the fluorescent things that you can't toss away. And, and when that got to be more than even I could stand, I packed up the car. And I can't believe how quickly they emptied that car and, and I was on my way. I, I wasn't there more than three minutes. They were fantastic. They're extremely well organized and-
We've had comments recently that it's quicker than going through the ATM.
I, I, yeah, probably.
And what a lot of people do, and we encourage it, is, you know, pull your, pull your stuff with your neighbors. You may not have enough to justify a trip on your own, but your neighbor may have a couple of, a couple of gallons of, of oil paint or some solvents or paint thinners, things like that.
You know, and they do charge you by how much stuff that you bring. But still, it's not, it's not a huge amount of money. And it's, it's well worth it to protect our environment, so give it a try. 3.6. Reminder and discussion of special town meeting on March 11th at 7:00 PM. Yes, that's what we just talked about, right?
Yep.
There'll be three articles?
Three articles, all related to the school project, the high school building project. The first one is the, is the primary authorization for the borrowing for the project. That has the $89 million price tag associated with it.
That's the base.
The base project. The, the motion that will be in front of town meeting will be to make that town meeting appropriation contingent, contingent on a proposition two and a half debt exclusion vote. That will be on the ballot on April 28th. And we expect all three communities to do that. So that it will be, it will, it will be on the ballot for all communities on, on April 28th. The second article is the, is the maintenance facility at a cost of about $800,000. And then the third article is a $2.7 million article for upgrades to the athletic facilities.
Now, it's important that folks realize that those are not incremental amounts of money. They are instead authorizations to expend any savings that are garnered through bids. And to ask the towns if they want those, if they want those savings applied to one or both of those projects. It does not increase the amount that, that the project is asking for.
Right, the total amount will stay at 89 or less. And if there are savings, we'll do those.
The building committee simply wants direction on what the town thinks we should do if we do have savings. Okay?
And then the, the impact on, on the average household in Townsend is about $500 per year.
That's based on what, 250 evaluation?
Based on, I, I think it's 212, something like that. I, I might have it with me.
Well, because I thought it was, I thought it was pretty close to 300 a year on a 200,000 evaluation. According to my Excel spreadsheet earlier today. It's probably based on the average.
Single, average single family is, is 212 in Townsend. And the, and so the, it will depend on how the, how the borrowing is structured.
That's right.
Whether we do a, a level debt or a declining debt. But at the, at the high end, we would expect that it's around $500 per year. And which, you know, that's not a small amount of money, we, we can't poo-poo that. However, somebody pointed out to me recently that, you know, we, as homeowners, we all care about the value of our, of our properties. And, and do things to try to, to preserve or increase the value of our property. And, and he said, you know, what, for $500, what can you do on an annual basis that will, that will retain the value of your property? And I thought that was a pretty good way to, to talk about this project. The flip side to doing the project, as, as Rob mentioned earlier, is we're going to lose that, we'll lose that grant money. And, and so we have to do something with the schools. If we do, you know, if we, if, if we say no in April, in, in March and in April, or in April, we still have to come up with some plan for the, for the school. We will spend more without that, we'll spend more on a smaller project than we would with this, with this project. And the impact on the community of, of rejecting the project will be significant in terms of, in terms of flight and disinvestment from the community. So I'm hopeful that the residents will, will support the project on both March 11th and April 28th.
I agree.
And I. Thank you, Andy. 3.7.
I have one question.
Yes.
Andy, is the warrant on the website?
It is.
Okay.
Yeah, and somebody pointed out to me today, we have a, we have a town meeting section on the website. Somebody pointed out to me today that they had trouble finding it, trouble getting to that, navigating to that town meeting page. So it's on the main, it's on the homepage of the website.
Excellent.
Oh, so we put it there?
It's right under, right under the elections, the open offices.
Okay.
Excellent.
And of course, if anybody ever has trouble finding anything, just give a call.
Yes.
3.7. Announce Alzheimer's Association 18th Annual Ride to End Alzheimer's, formerly the Memory Ride, to be held on Saturday, July 12th, 2014.
Yeah, just a, just a reminder for folks, this, the Memory Ride, or the now known as the, the Ride to End Alzheimer's, starts down in, starts in Devens and goes through central Mass and up into southern New Hampshire. It clips Townsend, doesn't, doesn't go through a large portion of Townsend, but up Townsend Road in, from Shirley, Shirley Road to, Proctor and Haynes, and then into, into Pepperell. So it's coming up in, in July. And so anybody who's interested in that can look into that or interested in, in supporting that can certainly do so. It will be well marked on the day of the event, too, for the safety of, of the riders and the traveling public.
3.8. Vote to authorize an additional $50,000 in deficit spending for winter operations. Say no more, it's going.
Yeah, no shocker here. We've, we appropriated $175,000 in the budget, which was an increase of $50,000 from, from prior years. We've traditionally underfunded snow and ice. We've previously authorized $150,000 in additional deficit spending for a total of $325,000. We're, we're going to surpass that. So we're late enough in the year that we're, we're becoming hopeful that things are going to slow down. Famous last words perhaps, but requesting that the board authorize an additional $50,000 in deficit spending.
Can't fight the weather.
Yeah. I move to authorize an additional $50,000 in deficit spending for winter operations.
I'll second that. Discussion, although I know you'd love to. All those in favor?
Aye.
4.1. Appointments of personnel officials. We have review request from Shirley Coit to appoint Frances Levi and William F. Miller to the Townsend Emergency Management Agency for terms from February 25th, 2014, through June 30th, 2016. Andy?
Shirley Coit has put these, these names in front of us and asked for appointments. They would be volunteers that would help her in the event of any kind of emergency, whether it be snowstorm, hurricane, the like.
I move to approve the request from Shirley Coit to appoint Frances Levy and William F. Miller to, to the Townsend Emergency Management Agency from terms, for terms from February 25th, 2014, to June 30th, 2016.
Second. The only thing I'd like to say is thank you. Thank you very much for volunteering. We need more volunteers and I appreciate it. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. What is selectmen's updates and reports?
I don't have anything.
I have nothing. Town administrator updates and reports.
The only thing I will mention is tagging on to the thank you that you gave to Levi and Mr. Miller. We've got numerous openings on committees still. Energy Committee, Charter Committee, Planning Board, Housing Authority. I think we still have, we have openings. There are still a few days left for people to pull papers to run for office for any of the elected positions that are available. There is a list on the website. If you go to the homepage and click on the election section, the town clerk has a list of vacant position, vacant elected positions. And then we, we also have a number of appointed, appointed positions available. So looking for, for warm bodies, new blood to fill some of these spots and, and take some of the burden off the people that are doing multiple committees.
I'd like to put in a plug for, for that in another sense. There are people who are either laid off or looking to change jobs. And it's another thing that you can add to your resume. You might think that it's trivial, but it's not. There's a lot of work that goes into it. There's a lot of learning that goes into it. And it is something that, that employers look at. They look at how involved are you in your community and how committed are you to, to making things better? So this is, this, this is not, I'm asking for volunteers because we need them. But you might think about how you can benefit from that.
Yeah, and there are a lot of people out there that have, have specific skill sets that we could really benefit from.
Yeah.
People for the Energy Committee or, we've got a couple of FinCom, Finance Committee members here tonight. I think there are two vacancies currently. And so people with, with a finance and budget background would be, would be welcome on, on that committee, so.
And it's always so nice to hear from a new perspective as well. You know, somebody that, that has not done it before is going to ask questions that, and see things that, that no one else would see, so.
Which helps us to look at things.
It helps things to evolve. Lori?
Yeah, I just wanted to say, when you were saying that about, you know, new blood and new perspectives, that we need to encourage our children, you know, because we're looking to the future. And the children, we're talking about the schools and how that enhances the community. They're the infrastructure of the country. So encouraging them to get involved, especially in either our Planning Board, if they have like any kind of building skills or desires or engineering skills for that. Sure, they can contribute in that way. Or our rec committees, a lot of the kids have always done that. So I think if we encourage our children to participate, that also looks good for their future education at colleges and universities. So let's not, you know, encourage them to participate as well. And we lead by example, obviously. Just a thought.
And our college students, if you're taking something, you know, energy courses, engineering, again, looking at environmental issues, it's, again, something that can go on your resume, but something that we can benefit from your recent knowledge of. So it's a win-win.
It truly is worthwhile and rewarding to, to volunteer and to serve the town in either an elected capacity or in a volunteer capacity on one of the boards or committees. Truly, and I very much encourage especially people of my generation to start getting more involved in this type of volunteering. And I think that it, you learn so much that you can put into your, your work life or everyday life. So step up to the plate.
Be nice. Anything else, Andy?
That's all I've got.
Okay, 5.3, Colin?
I move to sign the payroll and bills payable warrants out of session.
Second that. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I move to adjourn at 8:08.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Good night, folks.